Thank you very much. Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, first board meeting of the year. At this time, I'd like to welcome you and to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thanks for joining us up here at the front, a little bit different configuration. We used to do something like this years ago, so COVID really put us off for a while. Remember, we just had meetings with about five or six of us in the room spread way out a couple of years ago, so working our way back here. At this time, we'll have citizen input for items that are not on the agenda. And we've got a couple of requests to speak, and it looks like Rambo Zeld will start off this morning, the first testimony of the year.
Well, I'm honored, and I'm glad to see our new nonpartisan commission. And I'll tell you, that really gives me real joy and hope for our New Year, 2023. And I'm going to ask a couple of questions. I did pose this main question a few weeks ago, and I think it's so important, especially since we're becoming something new that we haven't been before. What does a nonpartisan commission look like? And I'm going to throw in another question, and to make sure I'll walk away asking this. Please find a reason to leave your party. You serve your county first, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy New Year. At this time, we have a couple of requests to speak on the Goal Five Wildlife Inventory topic that's coming up in the near future, so thank you for joining us. I know there was a request to kind of make this an other item today, but please just provide testimony, and then we'll get engaged as we go through this. So Jamie Bowles and Carl Finling, and there's two microphones, so you can both come join us. I guess we have three joining us today. So yeah, introduction, and we'll go from there.
I guess I'll go first. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners Adair, Debone, Jing. Great to see you all. Thank you for having us. I am Jamie Bowles, and I am the Regional Habitat Biologist for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Do you want to just do introductions, or you want me to just?
Go ahead, yeah, with testimonies. As I say, this is the public testimony, not on the agenda, getting information to flow here this morning.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you so much for allowing me to speak for a few moments, you know, off the agenda today. I really appreciate it. This is something that's really important to our community, which is the Goal Five Wildlife Inventory Update. That is a mouthful, but this is really important. It's important to the public, both tourists and residents alike. So ODFW was asked to participate in this update by the county, and we did. We committed considerable staff time to this, both for public meetings, Q and A, and gathering a whole lot of relevant, current, and scientifically defensible data. So many, many hours were spent on this. It's near and dear to our hearts. And so originally, the update was to include mule deer, elk, and then also bald and golden eagles. But of most importance is the declining mule deer populations, so I just kind of wanted to speak to that for a minute. Deer manage to die from a variety of causes. I mean, there is not just one factor, and it is the agency's mission to assist these wildlife populations. And so we participate in a variety of projects and studies to facilitate the populations, especially for mule deer. And this comes in the form of wildlife-safe passageways, such as the Highway 97, drastic declines in cuts in tag numbers. We do a lot of disease monitoring, anti-poaching campaigns. And then also, we work with the BLM and the Forest Service on habitat improvement projects and with a lot of private landowners. There are a lot of people that very much care about mule deer and other wildlife here in central Oregon. We also work with the county for land use, and the Goal Five protections, some of them, like the 300-foot setbacks and the wildlife-friendly fencing, is not as positively impacting as, let's say, subdivision restrictions might be. Now, mule deer have very, very high fidelity for both their summer and winter ranges. Mule deer fawns learn where to winter from their mommas, and that is passed down to subsequent years and generations. These are the areas that we need to protect. And for that reason, we have management objectives, and these management objectives are broken up by what we call wildlife management units. Now, those units here in central Oregon are about 25% to 70% of our management objectives. That's a problem. So ODFW supports moving forward with all three of these wildlife inventory updates, for the mule deer, for the elk, and for the bald and golden eagles. I only have a little bit of time, so I'm actually going to save the spiel about the golden eagles for the expert here, my colleague Emily Widener. But thank you very much for allowing me to be the voice for the agency, and also for the wildlife and for our community here in Deschutes County.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Emily Widener. I work for U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in Bend here, for the Bend Field Office. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide comment this morning. So as you might know, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service implements the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, as well as the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. The Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act prohibits anyone without a permit from taking bald or golden eagles, and so the definition of take includes disturb. Disturbance includes agitating, bothering, or bothering bald or golden eagles to a degree that causes or is likely to cause injury to an eagle, substantially interfering with normal breeding, feeding, and sheltering behavior, or nest abandonment. These are, you know, vaguely legal definitions. This also extends to effects that result from human-induced alterations initiated around a previously used nest site during a time when eagles are not present. So the service has national bald eagle management guidelines that offer very clear directions on how to avoid or minimize disturbing bald eagles, and under what circumstances the protective provisions of the act may apply to those activities. The provisions in the management guidelines do not specifically address golden eagles, excuse me. And golden eagles have fundamentally different behaviors and reactions to disturbance. In fact, golden eagles are far more sensitive to disturbance, and among other things, they will abandon their territories. Central Oregon is unique in that there are several golden eagle territories in an area currently undergoing rapid development. Golden eagles in general are declining throughout their range, and we are increasingly concerned that habitat alteration, land use change, and nest disturbance is exacerbating those declines. Thus, we have different and very project-specific guidance for activities that might disturb golden eagles. We're concerned that Deschutes County process could be authorizing people to build in an area that might require federal permitting, and I underscore "might." Finding or learning about an eagle territory late in the county's permitting process tends to slow things down. Knowing where nests are ahead of time allows us, the county, and then the county's applicant, to coordinate early and often, which is something we recommend folks do anyways. So given the period since the last update, we do strongly encourage Deschutes County to adopt bald and golden eagle nest information that we provided in February 2021, and I'll echo Jamie's comments about the amount of staff time committed to this and discussions we had prior to providing the data. In addition, you know, the county is welcome to further coordinate us to find a mutually agreed-upon outcome. And once again, I will also echo Jamie's sentiments that golden eagles and bald eagles are, you know, near and dear to our hearts, as well as they hold a special place for folks in the community as well. And this is not something that is an insurmountable task for us, and additional coordination would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much for the testimony. Both those mics are on.
Okay.
Different color scheme on those.
Yeah, perfect. I love following experts. Commissioner Adair Chang and Debone, for the record, my name is Carl J. Finling. I'm a 33-year resident of Deschutes County, living in Tumalo. And today, I speak on behalf of the Oregon Chapter of Backcountry Hunters and Anglers. The purpose of the testimony is to provide comments and express concerns relating to the lack of progress toward completion of the Goal Five updates to the wildlife inventory maps, and urging the three commissioners to include in the work plan for completion of the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan. This being my third such testimony since August of 2019, when I was formerly Land's Conservation Director for Oregon Hunters Association. And since that time, even more development in migration and no formal movement toward the proposed public meetings and updating of a 30-year plan regarding Goal Five and specifically inventory maps that will directly affect mule deer. And also, since my last public testimony, July of '22, on this exact subject, the process has still stalled, even though new data exists, as these two have complemented here, in updating the plan. More on this subject can be found in the previously submitted letters and testimony provided by multiple agencies sitting to my left, nonprofit organizations back here, and concerned citizens of various public comment opportunities before you all. In September '23, Deschutes County memorandum from Senior Planner Salzman I have here before me, lots of highlight as to the content. This memorandum from Senior Planner Salzman to the Commissioners, asking for direction on how to proceed with the Goal Five process. After acceptance of the Technical Assistant grant in 2020, helping to facilitate the completion of these inventories, Mason, Bruce, and Gerard, Inc. laid out coursework, the processes leading to new data sets and working groups, as well as priorities and advisement on how to proceed. With the three options available, BHA would like to see option one chosen, the mule deer inventory process becoming the pilot project, thus becoming the agreed-upon model for the other two. We chose mule deer for the simple reason reflected by Jamie, but in the rapid downward trending of this population and no notable declines in elk or sensitive bird habitat proportionally. With ESA listings federally, we see ample protections for sensitive bird habitat inventory group, and the mule deer inventory can effectively become the blueprint application for inventories number two and three, which would be sensitive bird and elk. No matter the outcomes here today, wildlife in Deschutes County will continue to feel the pressures of human impacts, whether from energy development, recreation, or other anthropomorphic causes, will continue to create land use conflicts unless this new available data is incorporated into the DCCP. Thanks for considering the inclusion of Goal Five Wildlife Inventory Updates into the Planning Department Fiscal Year 2223 Work Plan.
Great. Thank you so much. Yeah, so we're going to be talking about this, you know, the big picture was the psilocybin land use process we went through, so that really did, you know, put this off for a while, so now we're coming back to it. We're going to be bringing it back to have a discussion about the work plan, you know, in the next meeting or two. So, yep, any other thoughts or questions?
I'm wondering if there's actually more public comment. There's a couple more people in the audience, and somebody contacted me and said that she would be zooming in and might want to give public comment.
Yep.
Somebody has their hand raised.
Yes. Okay, so.
Yes, we did want to speak briefly as well.
Very good. So yeah, fill out a blue form. Please join us in testimony. We'll go to the online comment right now. As I say, this is the public comment period before we get to our agenda, three minutes. Good discussion today. So at this time, Mary Jo Hedrick. And thank you for joining us today.
Commissioners Adair, oh, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners Adair Chang and Debone. For the record, my name is Mary Jo Hedrick, and I am a retired ODFNW Wildlife Biologist, and I'm here today representing the Oregon Hunters Association as the Southeast Director, representing Deschutes County residents. OHA requests that the Deschutes County Commissioners include the Goal Five Wildlife Inventory Updates into the Planning Department 2223 Work Plan. Surveys have shown that central Oregon is a very popular area for both deer and elk hunting. However, mule deer populations have experienced declines in much of eastern Oregon. The loss or deterioration of habitat has been associated with these declines. As the human population grows and development pressures increases, it is becoming increasingly apparent that using outdated inventories can result in more conflicts between land use and wildlife protection. Existing Deschutes County wildlife inventories are from the 1990s and no longer reflect the best available wildlife habitat information. The South Central Mule Deer Research Project, completed in 2012, greatly improved ODFNW's understanding of where and how much, how mule deer utilize winter range habitats, and showed that deer that winter in Deschutes County migrate to summer ranges, not only in Deschutes County, but in the six adjacent counties. So we have a wide-ranging impact here. The Goal Five Inventory Update Public Outreach Report, funded by State General Funds, identified three wildlife inventories in need of updating. Those were the mule deer and elk winter range, and the golden and bald eagle nest sites. This report also showed that 92% of the public outreach respondents supported using the proposed new inventory in updating the Comprehensive Plan and the Development Code. These responses show that the protection of wildlife habitats is a widely shared value in Deschutes County, and that there is support for pursuing the next steps involved in the Goal Five Wildlife Inventory Update. Thank you for taking into consideration the Goal Five Wildlife Inventory Update in the Planning Department 2223 Work Plan.
Thank you very much for the testimony. At this time, we have two more requests, so Steve Hagan and Michael O'Casey. So as I say, this is our three-minute testimony, other items not on the agenda, but thank you very much for joining us.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Steve Hagan, and I'm the State President of Oregon Hunters Association. I happen to live a mile west of Sisters High School in unincorporated Deschutes County. I've lived in the state for 20 years, going through central Oregon to elk hunt and deer hunt. One of the reasons I moved to Sisters and to Deschutes County was seeing mule deer in the area, and I've watched the decline in person. It's not just an anecdote, it's happened. We happen to live in a county that has a 30-year plan for a highway from California to Washington of being four lane, a killing zone. OHA's done a lot of work there in terms of under crossings to protect mule deer. This is simply part of an overarching way to help mule deer populations. You have on your radar and your opportunity to assist with that. There's no silver bullet. A lot of people that are my age and older believe there is a silver bullet, predators, vehicles, whatever. No, this is part of it, is actually having a place where deer can winter safely and expand in other areas. As Mary Jo, I believe she just indicated, this happens to be a mule deer source for seven other counties in the area. They don't happen to be your constituents, but you have a responsibility, I believe, to assist in that happening, just because of the location of this county. Please take into account the mule deer Goal Five Inventory Update in the Work Plan for the 2223 Planning Division. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Michael O'Casey, and I am the Pacific Northwest Deputy Director for the Theodore Roosevelt Conservation Partnership, which is a national nonprofit working to guarantee all Americans quality places to hunt and fish. And I also am a resident of Deschutes County and have lived here for the past 12 years. I recently moved into the wildlife overlay zoning for Deschutes County, and part of the reason I moved into this zone was because I was able to see and interact with mule deer and other wildlife on a daily basis in unincorporated Deschutes County. I don't live too far from the recent zoning ongoing work off of, I believe it's, oh, what's the 710-acre proposal there? And one of the reasons I would like to see the Goal Five Wildlife Inventory Process move forward is because there are ways to develop properties while still accounting for wildlife habitat, things like cluster development, if it's within the wildlife overlay zone. And if you look at the maps on the mule deer overlay and the winter range, it's really common sense where these deer live. As Steve mentioned, Deschutes County has some of the best winter range for not only our county, but for the greater central Oregon area. And as part of that winter range, it's the responsibility of the county to make sure that development is responsible, and to simply agree with the inventories that the agency for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife has provided the data for. And so much of our county is winter range, and inventory process is simply accepting that that is a presence of an animal. And then it's the responsibility of the county to determine how that development in those zones takes place, and I'm supportive of that, and I appreciate that you guys have been working over this for the past couple of years. And I'm simply here today to show support and to recommend, on behalf of TRCP, that you guys continue that work and determine how to best move forward with both wildlife habitat that our county residents so enjoy, as well as rural development.
Thank you very much for sharing today. Any other questions or comments?
No, they're living in my yard and my horse pasture this winter, so yeah, we have heard of eight.
There you go.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. First off, thank you to everyone who came in today to give public comment on this important issue. We will be considering what gets done and what doesn't get done in the Community Development Department's work plan for the year next week, and prioritizing certain things. This is an item that has been deprioritized a number of times, and I very much would like to see it get to the top of the list and get completed. As we've heard, there have been huge declines in the mule deer population, and one of the key reasons is a loss of habitat and fragmentation of habitat into little bitty pieces. So habitat protection is key to maintaining this very important piece of our natural heritage for our community, and in the case of the mule deer inventory, I just want to emphasize that this is a very important food source for many Deschutes County residents and central Oregonians. So we are, we show a lot of interest in food security for our region in other ways, and this is one other way that we can, we can think about that. The deer that take up residence in town permanently and don't do their annual migrations anymore, they might get big and fat, but people aren't allowed to hunt them. So they are not functioning as a food source for our, for our community and for people who depend upon that as a piece of their, you know, subsistence nutrition on an annual basis. So we need to complete this inventory and update our wildlife overlays. It's key to stabilizing the population of these, of our mule deer, and eventually our elk and our eagles as well. Really important thing to emphasize as we look at, look at completion of this, these inventories is that these, these inventories, this adoption into our wildlife overlay does not prohibit residential development. It may condition residential development, and as you heard from, from Michael O'Casey, in an example like the 710 acres, the Eden Properties, it could result in a cluster of 71 homes that leave hundreds of acres of intact contiguous wildlife habitat, as opposed to chopping up that landscape into 71, 71 10-acre ranchettes. And that would have a hugely important effect on the usability and the, the value of the habitat in that location. So every year that we delay adoption of these inventories and updates of our overlays leaves more and more of the important habitat in Deschutes County vulnerable to the least wildlife-friendly development patterns possible. So that is my, those are the reasons. Next week, I will be making it a priority to, to see these inventories completed within the fiscal year, within the Community Development Department's work plan.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll acknowledge email. So Mary Jo Hedrick, we do have your written testimony through email to us also, and then a couple other items for citizen input. So citizen input saying they're pleased that the Whirlpool Park will remain unaltered. So we get to see at our board meeting, the deer migrating through this little park out here sometime, so those are the city deer, not the country, country deer. And then another whole topic, opposition to Site 181300 for solid waste management facility on Bear Creek Road. So that is a topic that, there's a map that was laid out with 12 proposed sites, so we're getting people engaged in that at this time, which I want to thank them very much for their engagement. And then also, citizen input about concern about adverse health effects from low-flying aircraft. This is in proximity to the Bend Airport. With that, that's the end of our citizen input. Thank you very much. Next week, we'll have this on our agenda. At this time, next item is Consent Agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
So just one note, item number 10, Approval of the Minutes of Budget Committee Meeting. If anybody's interested in the big picture, the financial choices and landscape of Deschutes County, that was the mid-year Budget Committee Meeting, and that is good reading if you're into the numbers of Deschutes County. Hopefully, somebody will read it. I read it. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Jumping to item number 12, this is a presentation by the Core Land Trust about its workforce housing program and partnerships. And Jackie Keo is probably online. Very good. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. So my name is Jackie Keo. I'm the Executive Director of Core Community Land Trust, and Core is rolling out a workforce housing program in the next month that we want to share with Deschutes County for a potential partnership. I'm going to share my screen really quickly. All right. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So as most of you know, Core Community Land Trust is a nonprofit committed to building sustainable and affordable homeownership opportunities for the central Oregon community, and we're specifically focused on serving the workforce, so folks who have potentially been essential workers to Deschutes County but are being displaced due to the high housing costs. costs in our area. As we know, just alone in the city of Bend, where Core is currently building, the median home price is nearly $800,000, and the average rent is, you know, over $2,000 at this point. And so we know specifically because the Ben Chamber just released their survey about how local employers, including Deschutes County, struggle to retain and hire employees given high housing costs. I know Core, even though we are small, we've had those challenges in the staff, and as surveyed, 81% of Deschutes County businesses have said that their high cost of housing is a high impact to filling vacancies. So Core, recognizing that we are committed to serving our workforce, has the workforce housing program coming out this year that can help support local businesses in that housing need. We're building over 50 permanently affordable homes in the city of Bend between now and 2026. And what we're doing with this program is we are giving employers the opportunity to give priority for these Core homes. As we know, Core homes are permanently affordable, so every time the home resells, it resells to another low-income household at no additional cost to the city or the county, and our homeowners are gaining significant equity, both in their equity in their homeownership, but also savings because their homes are net zero. So we always ask our home buyers, you know, what are their challenges, to see what we can do as a nonprofit to help them overcome that.
Jackie?
And this is just an example.
Jackie, this is, hello. Pardon me, so I just wanted to take a moment to hear about your net zero. You and I spoke yesterday, and that was just so exciting to hear about how those buildings can be and are net zero with the average utility bill of $12 a month. So I just wanted to highlight that, you know, it's exciting to see that opportunity, highly insulated, little bit of solar panels, low cost of utilities. So if people are interested, I mean, $12 a month, you know, we see a couple hundred-dollar, you know, natural gas or electric bill for the, you know, existing homes, existing inventory. I just want to celebrate that $12 a month.
No, thank you. And we celebrate it because not only is it so important for our community to have, you know, these homes that have a net zero footprint, that, you know, are creating healthy assets in Deschutes County, but also our homeowners are able to use that discretionary income they save that they would be spending on their utilities to, you know, purchase transportation, to invest in their child's college savings plan, or to go back to school. Those aren't just examples, those are real examples of what our homeowners have been doing with their savings. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll just run through a couple of our communities that are coming up. This is the Poplar Community. This is located off of Southwest Brookswood in Bend. These homes will be under construction this spring and completed by the end of the year. They're three-bedroom, two-bath homes designed for families, and they're completely net We use cottage cluster development code to make sure we can fit as many units on each site as possible. And all these homes, as I mentioned, are de-restricted, so these will be community assets for Deschutes County for years to come. The next community that we're working on, thanks in partnerships to the county, is our Simpson Community, which will have at least 35 two- and three-bedroom units for households earning between 65 and 100% area median income. And this is what I really wanted to talk to you all about, because our Poplar Community, we have an employer partner already selected. We are looking right now for employer partners for our Simpson Community. In short, what we'd like to do is select employer partnerships who want to give preference to their employees for the Simpson Community. And then these homes will be ready in 2025 and 2026 for homeowners to move in. This is a little bit about how the program works, and feel free to interrupt me with questions. So our households, just like you and I, can afford a mortgage, but just not at the cost that they need to in this market. So our homes are priced between $280,000 and $460,000, depending on how much you're making, with employers, so those are the folks we're targeting, so these are the employees. Employers can either donate cash at $50,000 a home, or they can give a land donation in lieu of cash to be a partner in this program. The way we do it is Core received the first legal preference ever in the city of Bend, which will allow us to give priority to certain populations, to make sure our homes are more equitably served, serving the residents that really need these homes. We give one preference point for first-generation homebuyers. This means you, your parents, your grandparents never owned a home, and therefore you weren't able to access that generational wealth building that most Americans have through homeownership. The second preference is employer partners. So any employer partner, let's say Deschutes County partners with us, any employee from Deschutes County who applies to our program would get two preference points. And this would allow them to be top of the list in terms of selection. And so this is how it would work. So for Unit 1, for example, if you're both first-generation homebuyer and an employee of Deschutes County, you would have three points, two plus one. Moving down, you know, you can see that Unit 3 goes to an employee who doesn't first-generation. They only have two points. We lotteryize within each bracket to make sure it's fair. But in short, as long as enough, Deschutes County, using that example, employees apply to fill the homes, no non-employee would receive a home or an employee. So it's kind of a guaranteed program.
Jackie, it's Commissioner Dare. I have some questions. So the traditional mortgage you're talking about, are you providing interest rates too? Because, you know, just jumping from 5% to 6% is really knocking people out of qualifying for mortgages. Do you have a program for those people that are buying in Core to get mortgages that are a bit less? And then you're actually only allowing one employer partner per cluster? Can they buy more than one, can they contribute to more than one unit?
Yeah, yeah, let me answer those questions. So the first answer is, we partner with specific mortgage lenders. The primary one is Uncle Bank. And so folks are using Oregon bond typically to get a mortgage, and we are factoring in those interest rates. As those interest rates rise, we recognize that homeowners can afford less, so we're thoughtful about pricing. We also provide significant down payment assistance to our homeowners to help them reach that mortgage price. So that's the first question. Your second question is that, so as Core, for example, the Simpson Community will have at least four or five cottage clusters on it. These are clusters of little communities, about 10 to 12 homes. We're looking for employers to kind of commit to one cluster, and then we would run the lottery for each cluster. That way, employers aren't competing with each other. It would be like, the first one would be the Deschutes County employees, the second cluster would be Mount Bachelor employees. In that way, that you're not having folks, you know, for example, if you have all the Deschutes County employees and all Mount Bachelor employees, you don't have them kind of competing. We want to make sure that participating employees get access to those homes that they've invested in. If that answers your questions.
Oh, that's great. That's so much better. I was not quite understanding that it is a cottage cluster, and you're not talking about all 35 cottages, you're talking about 10 cottages perhaps in a cluster. Is that what you just said?
And there is, yes. But there's no limit. I mean, I'd recommend 10, because working with major employers, you'll have a lot of employees who are interested in this program. But we could have them, I've run this program before in other parts of the state, and you could have an employer commit to one house to test it out. If you do that, what you're going to see is you're going to have hundreds of employees potentially apply, and you're going to wish you had 10 homes. But that would just be my personal recommendation.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I, while we're in question mode, can I ask another question? Jackie, so you're talking about this bracket of 65% to 100% AMI. And, you know, as an employer who's thinking about this as a recruitment and retention strategy, it would be helpful to have a sense of what that translates to in annual salary? So someone who's at 65% or someone who's at 100%? Do you have an understanding of kind of what salary range that is?
Yes, I do. It is specific to household size. So I would, I'll give you some ranges, but I would also recommend if you're interested to visit our website and look at the details, because based on if you have a household of five or a household of one, it's really going to be changing significantly. But on average, a 65% area median income household, one-person household is earning just over $40,000. A four-parent household, like a family, would be earning just under $60,000.
And then on the upper end, the 100% AMI?
On the 100% AMI, you're, let's see. So a one-person household is going to be, actually, is going to be actually closer to $60,000. But what I'm going to do is I can follow up with you all and send you an AMI chart to kind of look through that breakdown. What we like to do is when we have an employer committed, we work with their HR department to go through and see what their employees would qualify, what percentage, and kind of give you a better picture of who would be applying.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that would be helpful. I mean, county employees, we try to, we try to stay competitive as an employer in the wages and salaries that we pay, but that's certainly, like, I'm going to be playing with my calculator here, but I'm trying to figure out, you know, some of our employees who make an hourly wage of, you know, $18 an hour, where that would fit in this range and whether we actually would have employees who qualify or not. But please continue.
Yeah, and the other thing I would say is essentially the larger your family is, the higher your income could be. So what you might see is like a family of five, you say like, well, that person is making a pretty decent salary, but because they have, you know, few dependents, that's going to make them, you know, qualify essentially for our program.
Yeah, but I'm.
And Core is the only one, is one of few affordable agencies that are able to serve folks above 80%. And so really what we have is like this missing middle situation where a lot of households don't qualify for traditional programming, but still cannot afford to purchase a market-rate home or even rent in the area. And that's another area we're looking to serve through this program. That's why we're specific about going up to 100% area median income.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, just the quick calculation I made, somebody who's making 20 bucks an hour, and we do have employees who are in that range, working 2,040 hours a year, they're barely making $40,000. So I would expect we'd have quite a few employees that would fall within that 65% to 100% AMI range.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I absolutely believe you would. Okay, so just to get into the details, because now you all love details. So the homeowner purchases a home outright, and Core leases them back the land. The homeownership is not contingent on continued employment, which means that if for some reason the homeowner was let go or chose to leave, they would still own their home. This is important because we don't want folks to lose both their job and their home in one swoop. At the same time, we want homeowners to achieve as much income as they can as they grow in their trajectory at Deschutes County, so there's no income cap. And that's the other thing. So once you qualify and close on your home, you can be promoted, you can advance to the county for years to come. And in terms of resales, when the home resells, which we average over 75 years, the home will resell at least four times, it would go back to another Deschutes County employee. All right, that's all I have. Any questions beyond what you already asked?
That's pretty exciting to be able to have this housing opportunity. One of my thoughts is that, you know, I'd sure like to see, you know, private business hopefully get engaged. Do you have any examples of that at this time?
Yes, we do. So we have quite a number of major employers who are interested, and we will be announcing on January 12th at this Chambers West Brewing Event, our employer opportunities for our Poplar Community. So I would invite you all to tune into that, where we can kind of go over how employers who are interested can get involved. For the Simpson Community, we're in conversation with a couple of major employers.
Great. Have you been able to present at the EDCO Board, Economic Development for Central Oregon? So that's where some of the big employers and the business people are around.
Yeah, so we have, EDCO's been helpful in making those connections. We've had serious conversations with Mount Bachelor, with the hospital system here, with Bend Public Schools. We, although this is not in Deschutes County, we're actually also running this program up in Primeville for the school district there to provide teacher housing for them. And so there's a number of folks we're talking to about that.
And then you're looking at other places around the tri-county area for land, I'm sure.
Yes. So Core wants to be more equitable in its geographic diversity of where we place our homes. And so while the pipeline currently is in the city of Bend, we are looking quite seriously, as I mentioned, both Primeville and Redmond. It would be open for any employer that potentially has land, including Deschutes County, in another area, and we'd be happy to build there. As we know, land is the highest cost, and the donation of land in lieu of cash, I think, is a really great option, because not only can we build in more rural area, but like what we're doing in Primeville, we can customize the homes based on those employees' needs. So up there, what we're looking at is teacher housing for entry-level teachers, so the homes are smaller, like one bedroom, which makes the price point more affordable. So when you get in partnership with a major employer who has land like that, you can be really specific into serving those employees' needs.
Great. Sure, Nick.
Thank you. Just to clarify, and maybe it's clear and I just missed it, but if an employer makes a contribution, is the employer guaranteed to have a unit for an employee? I understand employees have a lottery system, and there's preference, but is the employer who donates the land or donates financial resources, is the employer guaranteed at least one unit per, whatever the metric is?
Yes. Yes, so the way it would work simply, let's say Deschutes County wants to invest in the Simpson project, they want to invest in 10 homes. That's the commitment, and whether it's a land reduction or a cash incentive, you would, Deschutes County would have those 10 homes. Then, we would work with Deschutes County to ready your employees who are eligible to apply for that lottery, and any Deschutes County employee who meet our program requirements could apply. And then when those homeowners sell, if they do, it would go back to a Deschutes County employee. So essentially, an investment in 10 homes over the lifetime would serve four times that number of employees.
Well, great. Thank you for sharing today. This is, you know, an opportunity being presented for discussion, but now we know, and hopefully the world's listening too, you know, employers out there that could see this opportunity, or landholders also getting involved with this opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time this morning.
No, thank you so much for presenting this information. And, you know, we've tracked the work of Core, you know, from the county commission for a long time, generally, but it's really helpful to understand this specific opportunity to secure some units of housing for our workforce at the county. You know, as I said after I crunched those numbers, it's pretty clear that we would have a significant number of employees that would fit within that 65% to 100% AMI range. And we hear weekly from various departments of the county how difficult it is to recruit and retain employees because of the housing costs in the region. So this, I could see this being a great opportunity for us in terms of employee recruitment and retention. So thanks.
Jackie, yes, thank you for what you do, and don't forget Lapine also. I think it, I know, maybe we need to duplicate you in order to get this program done more in our community, because we are desperately in need of this housing. The Simpson Community, you're not projecting those units to be able to be moved into until '25, second quarter starting?
Yes, 2025 into 2026. So each time we finish one cottage cluster of 10 to 12 units, we'll sell that, and then we'll keep, we'll continue to build.
Okay.
Which is, has always been our timeline. And then in terms of Lapine, we are, we don't need to duplicate me. I have a wonderful team who is growing to serve the needs in Deschutes County, and we are looking at land in Lapine as well. I think we have conversations coming up. I think we have conversations coming up with you all actually around that. So thanks for that.
Oh, good. Great. Thank you for letting us know that.
Thank you very much for the update and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Look forward to talking with you soon.
Item number thirteen, this will be a public hearing in consideration of an order vacating public right of way. Oh, yep, there we go. Cody, thank you so much for joining us.
Morning, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. And start my presentation. So this morning, we are holding a public hearing for a proposed vacation of an unnamed road right of way in Township eighteen South, Range twelve East, Section nineteen. The agenda for this, for my presentation this morning, first, I'm gonna go through some background information regarding the, the right of way in the proposed vacation area. I'm going to present the road department's findings and recommendations for these proceedings. Then ask the board chair to open the public hearing for interested parties to provide testimony. And when the public hearing is complete, I'd then ask the board to consider Order Number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three. So background information, Oregon Revised Statutes three sixty-eight, three twenty-six to three sixty-six provide the procedure for counties to vacate public roads, public property, or other public property interest under their jurisdiction. The road department has received a petition for the vacation of an unnamed undeveloped right of way in Township eighteen South, Range twelve East, Section nineteen, that lies within the platted River Bend Estates subdivision. Here's a location map. Just, just about a block north on this map would be the city of Bend. Just about a block south would be Baker Road. So this right of way exists just west of US ninety-seven and the railroad tracks there, north of Baker Road. The petitioners as abutting property owners in these proceedings are Benjamin Miller, who is an authorized representative for the Ben Christian Fellowship, which is the owner of Tax Lot twenty-two hundred. The northern portion of that right of way crosses Tax Lot twenty-two hundred. Thomas Snell, who's a joint owner of Tax Lot fifteen one hundred, so next property south. Brian and Donna Stiff, the owners of Tax Lot fourteen four hundred. David McNaughton and Sherilyn Vanover, trustees of the McNaughton Vanover Living Trust, the owners of Tax Lot fourteen three hundred. And Paul and Cindy Shankka, the owner of Tax Lot fifteen two hundred, which is at the south end of that right of way. Abutting property owners who are not petitioners, who did not sign a petition for these proceedings were Shawna Snell, who's a joint owner of Tax Lot fifteen one hundred. Brian and Katie Zivney, the owners of Tax Lot eight hundred on Assessor's Map eighteen twelve nineteen, which is one of the two properties at the far south terminus of the, of that right of way. And William and Jessica Stee, the owners of Tax Lot nine hundred, which is the other property at the far south end of that right of way, which are both properties within the Deschutes River Woods subdivision. The petitioners provided the following reason for the proposed vacation, that the improvements to the, that improvements to the church facility located at nineteen eight three one Rocking Horse Road, known as map number eighteen twelve nineteen A, Tax Lot twenty-two hundred. So more specifically, that Ben Christian Fellowship has intentions of doing some site plan improvements for their property that would include, particularly in the southern portion of their property, that would include new buildings and new parking space. However, vacation of just that portion of the right of way across their property would leave an orphaned right of way south. So as such, they've collected signatures from additional property owners to the south to vacate the entire right of way. The right of way was created by a dedication deed, deed number nineteen seventy dash one seven two zero six one six in nineteen seventy, which was subsequent to the nineteen sixty-one recording of the Ben, the River Bend Estates plat. The reason that this right of way was dedicated by deed is unknown to current road department staff. We didn't see any, in researching this, this, the record for this right of way, we didn't find any land use conditions tied to this, this dedication. There's no record that the, that was recovered by the road department that this right of way was ever accepted by the county either. So, so the, you know, the, the two main ingredients for, for creating a road right of way by dedication are dedication or offer by the property owner and then acceptance by the county governing body. So in this case, we never did have, or at least the record indicates that we never did have acceptance by the county governing body. But nonetheless, the county does have authority to effectively quitclaim the dedication deed through these vacation proceedings. Highlighting that, a portion of the nineteen seventy right of way that lied east of the Ben Christian Fellowship property was vacated in nineteen ninety with Order Number ninety dash zero six six. And that, those vacation proceedings were subject to a public hearing. The right of way created by that dedication deed is fifty feet wide. The south terminus of the right of way, which lies at the Arnold Irrigation District Main Canal, which, and that canal is contained within a separate canal easement. The right of way also terminates at the northern boundary for the Deschutes River Woods subdivision. With the exception of the Arnold Main Canal, there's no other public utilities within the proposed vacation area. And there's no public road improvements within the proposed vacation area. There are private outbuildings that appear to exist within the proposed vacation area, particularly on Tax Lot fourteen two hundred, which is shown there on the screen. There, there kind of in the northern portion of that property, there's a, there's a large shop building and a greenhouse or some other outbuildings that are, that appear to be located within the, the proposed vacation area. The proposed vacation with landlock Tax Lot fifteen one hundred, which would potentially deprive the owners of that property of access necessary for the exercise of their property right. The property owner in this case has consented to the vacation of, of the proposed vacation area through these proceedings. And it appears that that property gains access via a separate driveway and driveway easement across the Ben Christian Fellowship property. A notice of this public hearing was mailed to joint property owners and affected utilities and agencies. Road department did not receive any substantive comments in response to that notice. So with all that, the road department makes the following findings. The proposed vacation area was offered to the public by dedication deed recorded at the Deschutes County Clerk's Office as deed number nineteen seventy dash seventeen two zero six one six in compliance with ORS three sixty-eight, three twenty-six. The owners of a recorded property right that would potentially be deprived of access necessary for the exercise of that property right with the proposed vacation have consented to the proposed vacation in accordance with ORS three sixty-eight point three thirty-one. The petitioners who represent the owners of more than sixty percent of the property abutting the subject right of way have submitted complete petitions and submitted the required fee in compliance with ORS three sixty-eight, three forty-one one C, three forty-one three, three forty-one four, and three fifty-one. Except for utilities contained by separate easement instruments, the subject right of way does not contain public utilities and does not contain public road improvements of value to the public. As the petition for vacation does not include acknowledged signatures of owners of a hundred percent of the property abutting the proposed vacation area, the vacation proceedings are subject to a public hearing under ORS three sixty-eight point three forty-six, which we are holding now. And the subject right of way does not appear to be needed for current or future public use. So with that, based on the findings I just gave, the road department has determined that the proposed vacation is in the public interest. And the road department recommends that the board of county commissioners approve the vacation by adoption of Order Number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three, subject to the following conditions. One, no opposition to the vacation is reported to the county prior to vacation order presentation to the board of county commissioners or during, during the required public hearing. As I previously indicated, the road department has not received any comments in opposition to these, to the proposed vacation. And lastly, the vacated property shall vest with the rightful owner or owners holding title according to law in accordance with ORS three sixty-eight point three sixty-six one C. For this time, I request that the board chair open the public hearing. And then after public testimony has been given this morning, and subject to any testimony disputing or supporting the matter, I request that the board chair close the public hearing and that the board consider adoption of Order Number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three. Lastly, attendees who wish to provide testimony via Zoom can select the raise hand function at the bottom of the Zoom application window to be promoted to a panelist and to provide testimony. And with that, I will pass it back to the board chair.
Thank you very much. Very complete and thorough report on that. Any questions by the board? Any other commission?
Should we open the hearing and discuss, or just ask questions now?
Oh, I just had a question for Cody. What is the applicable vacation petition fee that they had to pay?
In this case, it was one thousand dollars.
Okay.
One thousand dollars apiece or collectively?
Collectively.
I, I, one, one question I do have is, you know, we don't want, and they don't want us to have a right of way right through the middle of their properties. But is there, in a situation like this, is there an opportunity to, to sort of swap and put the, put the right of way on the very, you know, the eastern edge of their property instead? It's a, it's a significant length of right of way that, you know, it just seems like could have. There, there's, you know, in future years, there could be needs for frontage roads. There could be needs for trail corridors. You know, it, it terminates right at where the Arnold Canal runs through. And I, I know that that's gonna be piped and there's gonna be recreational, there's gonna be work to, to create recreational access off of there at some point. So this could be like a, you know, a half mile, three quarter mile spur off of that trail at, at some point. Or is that, I mean, is that not a, not an option in a situation like this?
Well, I, you know, I, I defer probably to the legal counsel on this one, I guess, just from the road department's perspective. You know, receiving a vacation petition like this, I, I don't necessarily see it as an opportunity for the road department to start negotiating things like that. I, I think ultimately the vacation proceedings are completely at the, you know, completely at the direction of the board of county commissioners. So if that was something the board was, you know, wanted to pursue, I, I'm sure that, you know, that could be discussed. But I, I, I mean, I, I guess in straightforward terms, particularly in this case where this wasn't a right of way where the county owned any sort of title to it, where the county had put any money on the table to acquire it. This was, this, I, I mean, it's kind of unknown reasons why this, why this, why these property owners in nineteen seventy dedicated this right of way. And, you know, and, and again, the, the county never accepted this right of way. I, 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 I don't necessarily see a, a means to, to negotiate for things like that. And, and, you know, these property owners would potentially have other remedies for effectively removing this encumbrance from their property. The, the vacation proceedings here are obviously the quickest and cheapest and easiest option. So that said, I, I don't know if legal counsel has, has anything they want to add to that discussion, but.
Well, how about with that question out there, let's do the public hearing, because that, I mean, that's a good topic, but it's, yeah, kind of. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing in consideration of Order Number twenty twenty-three dash zero three, zero zero three, vacating public right of way, Section nineteen Township one eighty-five, Range twelve E. So the public hearing is open. Is there anybody here to testify on the matter in the room? Wonderful, thank you. You can fill out a blue form after you testify, but just provide a name and address.
My name's Benjamin Miller. I'm the one who petitioned. And I'm the lead pastor and president of the church that's asking for the vacation of easement. To answer your question specifically, if you look at it, the linkage goes from Rocking Horse to Buck Canyon where the canal is. And it actually, that linkage is already made through Rocking Horse and then down Buck Canyon. They connect at the canal at the exact same area. So it's basically like a circle that was created. I don't, there's no proposed reason behind it that we can see. And as talking to every landowner, which I went and talked to, every one of them has been asking for years for their property back, knowing the one at the end with the building in it. They are trying to get solar on their property and they have been hindered from it because it's in a public access. So everybody's looking at either keeping it quiet or wanting to use the space because that's what they had purchased originally, or wanting to put solar on their property. Everybody's, everybody is hoping for it. That's why you had so many people say yes right away to it. So the need for that road to be there isn't listed in the county, nor is it seen in the neighborhood, nor I think would it be required since you already have the connection from the exact same start and finish point. So if there was a reason to go through, it's already there and doesn't need to go through their property. So obviously, we're pro, we're pro for it. It's been, we've had the property for probably twenty-two years and it's been on there. What you find is there's a lot of transient behavior in that area as well. And for some of the reasons, when you've talked to different people, you know, different sheriffs to say, hey, we gotta kick them out of here. One of the things listed as well, it is a public access technically. You have someone who could set up a tent right here and we can do nothing with it. So it's private property. It also, in, it, it requires that the homeowners can't fence their property in a however fenced fashion, you know, is what is legal for the area. So there's some homeowners that would love to fence that area to keep transient behavior out of there. And over the last twenty-two years, what we've seen is tons of transient behavior. We've seen multiple homicides right on the other side of the railroad tracks. We've seen all kinds of drug use. We've removed, we've removed all kinds of alcohol, drugs, needles from those areas. And the homeowners would desperately love to, to create some safety and a barrier around their legal property. The one thing that's stopping them is that they can't fence through a public access area that's, has no, has no meaning to it, so.
Is the, is the transient activity, like, are there people basically just traveling along the rail corridor and then, and then walking over into, into, into some of these subject properties or?
Yeah, so you know, I think we're all aware that transient tents and like, they're anywhere that they can be. And if you notice, that area is a really quiet area because it backs right up to the railroad tracks. And so people can travel on the railroad tracks and then pop right off. And so what you find is that in that area, we are continually trying to, we, we weekly go and look at the area just because as a church, we have minors on property and we would love to fence it back there as well, just to keep minors safe. And so we're constantly there. But what you find is right on the other side of the railroad property, there's actually a piece of land owned by four individuals. I currently, through the school board, which I'm also on, for Morning Star, have four, three of the properties there as well. And we have the same issue where you're trying to keep transient behavior off just because anywhere that they can stay, they want to stay. And when it's called in, it's hard for our local law enforcement to stay up on all of that stuff. And so you know that the best way for, to keep the area safe is for homeowners and landowners to be able to fence their property and keep it safe instead of relying on the sheriffs to continually come out and kick people out of areas that can't be monitored, that are very rarely monitored. So, yeah, there's a ton of transient behavior. And the property adjacent to us is specific power. In fact, we've had quite a bit of issue in the past with them and we've addressed it with them. And what's great is that they came in and they put a fence at the beginning of one of the, of, of the, the public access right of way as well. They've done what they can. People are doing what they can, dropping trees, trying to stop movement of people because there's a difference between a walker and someone who can drive. And I can just tell you, the homeowners have been fighting it for a long time. So there's, there's more, there's a lot more to it that would love to see, would love to see it vacated. Obviously, that's why all the homeowners are in complete agreement, saying, hey, please, 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 please. It's, it's a safety issue as well, so.
Yeah, but it also points the, to the need to do more in our community to provide pathways out of homelessness for people who are ready to do that so that the people who are not ready to do that, you know, we, we can, in good faith, clear them from, from areas where they're not supposed to be.
Yeah, and I think that we would all agree that when it comes to Yeah. And I think that we would all agree that when it comes to homelessness and transient behavior, I don't think that the government alone should be the one that holds the, holds the burden on it. I think it's a community thing in which homeowners, landowners also need to have tools and skills available to help with those people in their area. And it's a, it's a, it's a total community issue in which we all have to take on if it's going to happen. And so, you know, hopes for us is to say, hey, give us tools back in our hands too, so that we can also work on that and safeguard children in our area. It's important to us.
Thank you very much for the testimony. Is there anyone online on this topic? Anybody else in the room? So with that, we'll close the public hearing on the matter and any other discussion or questions?
Chair, if I could just comment regarding the question and to clarify Commissioner Chang's question. The vacation statutes, statutes really don't offer, can you not hear me?
Exchange, exchange.
Really don't offer or contemplate this, any type of discussions or negotiations for right of way exchanges. Certainly the commissioners could direct staff in the future, separate and apart from the vacation proceedings, to negotiate with property owners for rights, right of ways.
Well, having, having heard the specifics of the situation in, in this case, I, you know, I, I don't have any real speci-, I didn't have any real specific ideas about what that right of way could be used for at the edge of the, the rail, the railroad easement, so. It was just, it was a somewhat hypothetical question.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion or deliberation or a motion?
I just want to thank Pastor Miller for coming in today and patience is a virtue. And I, you know, considering what the neighborhood has been dealing with, it now makes a lot more sense. Thank you so much for taking the time.
I'll move approval of board signature of order number 2023-003 to vacate a specified public right of way within the River Bend Estates subdivision.
I'll second the motion.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And a chair of votes, yes. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you very much for the, the great preparation in that topic also. Item number 14, psilocybin TPM amendments, consideration of second reading.
Good morning, commissioners. Happy New Year. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner, and I'm here today to present two ordinances to the board for consideration of second reading. Those ordinances are 2022-014 and 2022-015. The whole history of the process, the legislative process is provided in your memorandum. Just very briefly, first reading of these two ordinances were conducted on December 19th, following the deliberations that occurred on December 14th. During deliberations is when the, the psilocybin time, place and manner amendments were divided into two different ordinances. So we have 2022-014 is the one that covers most of the general TPM time, place and manner amendments regarding psilocybin businesses in Deschutes County. Ordinance number 2022-015 addresses specifically destination resorts and psilocybin service centers. I've provided a copy of the two ordinances as well as all the corresponding exhibits in your package. And I'm happy to answer any questions or proceed.
And no changes since the first reading?
No changes, except for the title block, which I remember this time.
Great. I guess I, I'm looking for the, what page is the second?
112.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trying to be prepared.
I know it's back there.
Oh, and I'll just add that at the time of first reading, it was determined that this, this adoption would not occur by emergency. So it was voted unanimously, but it's going to be a non-emergency. So that means that the ordinances would be effective 90 days after the date of adoption, which places us at April 4th, 2023.
So at this time, is there a motion for a second reading?
April 4th of 2023. Is that what you just said? Okay. I move adoption of ordinance number 2022-014, amending the Deschutes County Code Title 18.
Second.
If we could first have a motion just for the second reading by title only.
Oh, okay. Okay. I move by title only adoption of ordinance number 2022-014.
This is just, this is second reading.
Reading, second reading.
Reading by.
Sorry.
So the motion was second reading by title only.
Right.
Do you want to make the motion?
Go ahead. I've, I've done it twice. That's enough.
You can, you can get the, the second part, the, I move a second reading by title only.
And then there, you're seconding it.
I'm seconding it. But, but we don't even say what ordinance it is though?
Well, I'll, I'll read it.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded. So this is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-014 and ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning to create time, place and manner regulations concerning psilocybin businesses in unincorporated Deschutes County. So a motion for adoption, and that'll put us on the 90 day. Oh, yes.
Let's vote on the motion to read by title.
See, and I got off track there. Okay. So it was moved and seconded. So Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Can I acknowledge that I already read it?
That's fine.
Okay.
I move adoption of ordinance number 2022-014.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Okay, now the other ordinance.
Move second reading by title only of ordinance number 2022-015.
I second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. This, this is the second reading, ordinance number 2022-015 and ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Deschutes County zoning to create regulations concerning psilocybin businesses in destination resorts.
And I, I just want to make a comment that I'm thankful our legal recommended that we separate these because I think it's really important considering the community had been pretty concerned about that in destination resorts. So I think this gives it a lot more weight. So thank you for that.
Is there a motion for adoption?
I move adoption of ordinance number 2022-015.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. So these will be effective 90 days from now.
That's correct. And we will change all of our websites and start to get the information out for people who are conducting inquiries. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. At this time, item number 15, consideration of a cybersecurity services contract. Kevin Furlong, thank you for joining us. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm Kevin Furlong with Deschutes County IT Department.
Don't get to see you too often here, huh?
No, no.
So tell us a little bit about the contract.
So this contract is for us to expand on our cybersecurity program and obtain some skilled resources that can augment our, our defenses and engage in response to any indicators of compromise and, and restore if anything is compromised. These, these organizations have highly qualified individuals that are kind of outside our, our ability to reach in terms of their, both their skillset and their, and their earnings potentials. So this is a way for us to get that talent and, and the benefits that come with that in a, in a more bite-sized fashion.
It's a one-year contract starting right now, beginning of this year?
Yes.
So Kevin, I was just wondering why you chose this company. I was doing some research on them. I know they're, what, in Delaware East Coast? And they're, according to their LinkedIn, they're really small. I don't know if they don't keep their LinkedIn up to date, but they just seemed incredibly small. And I'm wondering who was handling that part of cybersecurity defenses in Deschute right now? And I love it when you send out those tests. I think you should be giving more tests because I know I passed that one and I want to pass another one, you know, because I think we all need to be aware of the dangers of, you know, what is out there. And, you know, you hear about it all the time.
So when we were researching corporations to, to partner with, that one came up because they were one of the highly rated ones of the manufacturer of another product that we use. And so they have a platinum rating, which is the highest in the nation at the moment. And so that gave them a leg up to ask more questions of them. So we did. And their total size is, they're not the biggest one, but they do have some of the, some of the best talent. And they maintain a fully operational 24-hour-a-day security operations center, which is one of the benefits we're hoping to, to enhance our services with. And so through that and, and researching with some of their existing clientele, they have a high amount of respect from other organizations, much larger than us in this business. And so going on that, we spoke to them in great length and multiple, multiple engagements there and conversation and details. And became convinced that they could do what we're asking for. And so we have kind of a laundry list in the, actually it's an exhibit A of the contract of what the deliverables will be. But it's more about the, the outcomes that you want to achieve is what we're targeting as we, as we selected individuals and corporations to choose from providers in this industry. That's how we came to the, came to the Zent IT as the, as the conclusion, that that would be a viable option. As a safety measure, of course, we, we did state the contract to be a one-year term. So we're not locked in for multiple years at a time. If we, if we decide that something else comes up, we still have the option to, to switch over to that.
I thought that, that's good if you're doing it for a year and trying it and just making sure they are, they are the right choice.
I was, it was unanimous amongst all of their references that we would not be disappointed.
That's great.
Literally their phrases.
Well, we're, you know, at the county and the public sector in general, we're, we're always trying to figure out whether we should be hiring people to do, you know, hiring our own staff to do something or whether we should be contracting out with the private sector and, and, you know, I think this one-year contract is a good example of us checking out, checking out both sides, or both, both of our option pathways. So I'm supportive of this contract.
Yeah. We looked at the idea of, of hiring, hiring and then retaining. And to be able to accommodate vacations or sickness or what have you and, and just have enough bodies to, to maintain the coverage would be quite an investment and, and a long-term one as well. So again, it comes back to contracting for services, get that talent, see how it works out. And, and then maybe make a long-term relationship with that. But, but you're not locked in.
Great. Is there a motion?
I move approval of board signature of document number 2023-057, a contract with Cent IT for managed cybersecurity services.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No news is good news in the cybersecurity world from my point of view.
But we do need more tests.
Yes.
It's the first of the year. Send it in a couple of weeks when everyone's forgotten and then I'll probably, yes, anyway. I loved it.
Okay, other items? I think, yeah, maybe Nick, did you have some things?
Thank you, Chair DeGone. I have a couple of items and I'm not sure if Whitney's going to join us with another topic, but two items. One, the Central Oregon Visitors Association and specifically at Julia is working on a session about camping demand and development for the Governor's Conference on Tourism in Portland in early April. And they saw the RFP that we had issued for camping RV parks and thought that we would be a good contributor to that. And they, she reached out and asked if a commissioner would like to serve on the panel in Portland and be one of the speakers.
So yeah, I heard about that. I really lit up like, oh, you know, this is interesting because it's exactly what we were talking about is, you know, what, where could we provide something like that with our state land use system for 50 years? It's, it's been kind of a hump that a lot of people don't get over adding capacity. We do have our existing federal leases, the, the lake resorts and, you know, some capacity. But it could be a shock absorber for, for housing needs also, and it's not optimal, as I always say. But there's a lot of people live in a kind of transient van life. We could see more of that. And, you know, working in the summertime seasonally, that could be a good option. Yeah, so all kinds of ideas.
Can you, can you repeat what the conference, the focus of the conference is?
It's the Governor's Conference on Tourism.
Tourism.
In Portland. And the conference is April 3rd to the 5th. My guess is they don't have the detailed schedule available yet, so she's preparing a panel of speakers to participate.
So it'd be a panel at the conference or maybe a half hour, an hour or something?
Yeah. So if the focus is on tourism, I mean, we, we have, we have discussed campgrounds from a range of perspectives. But I, I think this is probably primarily focused on outdoor recreation camping, not necessarily some of the camping ideas that have come up around essentially temporary or transitional housing in, in the region. I would be, I would be willing to serve on that, on that panel and talk about, you know, specifically the, the county properties that we have, we have owned for decades that have been zoned appropriately for campground development and were designated as parks by past county commissions, but, which we haven't really done anything about yet. There, there have been no land use restrictions preventing us from, from developing those as campgrounds. Just a, a lack of interest or focus on our, on our part. But that, that would, that'd be what I could contribute to that if, if I did that panel presentation.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Dare?
Well, I know I've had people that have come and said, oh, please, we've got, you know, property down by Klein Falls. Can't we make that into a park? And we've kind of looked at it. And, you know, I, you know, when you think that Deschutes County is what, 79% federal, state land? You know, it seems like we already have a lot of great places to camp here, to do things on, but it is, it is our industry. So, you know, if Commissioner Chang can't go, I would be happy to do that.
So how about, I, I'm excited about it too. So how about we set this for like a work session? Put all these ideas down, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of ideas. And maybe, you know, take a, a position paper or just an idea page or so from us, you know, and, and whoever else wants to provide input from Deschutes County even. And then we'll flip a coin who goes or look at the schedules, see who it fits best.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll inform her that yes, we have a.
Oh, yes.
Somebody wants to do it. Yes.
And the name is forthcoming.
Yep.
We can bring straw.
Throw all the ideas out. I'd love that idea.
Great. Okay. The second item I have is the Association of Oregon Counties and AOC, the Legislative Committee. They've asked Deschutes County for a voting member. We are just in a position with the first meeting to be conducted on next Monday, January 9th, if we have a, a voting member of AOC. So that's a board decision on who to appoint.
And we had talked about that at the end of the year. We just hunted it to today. So.
Right.
Yeah. Thoughts?
I was a voting member last year on legislation, so I'm, I realize that I have to share.
And would you be interested in that? I, I am too.
So that's what I'm thinking, yeah, so.
I would, but there's a way that these things tend to go on this commission, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to.
Express my interest in.
Let's communicate and, you know, make sure we're getting the best information out possible. You know, it is a position of Deschutes County on legislative topics that'll be coming through during the legislative session. It's the kind of the quick response committee too, if there's something happening, you know, on the floor or, you know, in any of the committees, a position for AOC, so.
And just like the discussion of this campground presentation, this the person who serves on the Legislative Committee should be representing the deliberations of the full Board of Commissioners, which we do during our weekly legislative discussions.
So Commissioner Chang, if Commissioner Dare and I came up with a position, could would you be comfortable where like, well, I don't agree with this, but the position of Deschutes County is, because I could see us in that situation possibly.
Of course.
So, I mean, I.
And I would, but I would certainly express my difference of opinion with that. I would say that, but I, you know.
Well, this is us practicing in this situation.
And that is like never been in question. I mean, you know, when when the majority of the board votes a specific way, I always represent that perspective and I always will give my, you know, my own perspective as well, but I will, I have never tried to misrepresent the the perspective of the majority of the board. So if you're implying that I would do that, I have some real concerns.
Oh, I'm just practicing to make sure we're doing good things for the people of Deschutes County, not personal at all, but that could be a scenario, couldn't it? You know, you it's the style. Well, you know, position is this, but I want to give you an opinion about this. You know, I'm just saying that there's a style that this could go, so. But, I mean, with this discussion, I'd feel comfortable with you being there. Commissioner Dare?
Are you asking for my vote or my support?
Just a position, yeah, this is just kind of guidance for consensus on this topic. I mean, it could end up in a vote if we want to formalize it like that, but.
It's fine. It's a year, it's a year appointment.
Every two years, there's a legislative session. This is going to be the, you know, the.
The important one, right.
Longer session on the position of Deschutes County. So as I say, I'd be happy to have you represent Deschutes County at the AOC Legislative Committee.
I would be happy to represent Deschutes County.
There we go. Thank you very much. So, yeah, that can be the name provided then.
I will do so. I will share that with Association of Oregon Counties. Thank you. And I think Whitney has, is that correct?
Good morning, Commissioners. We received, Nick received an email from the Deputy State Court Administrator in late December inquiring about the potential of a fiscal ask to support courthouse expansion and was asking if we could confirm if we plan to make a request and if so, what the amount of the request will be. I know staff's planning to bring the courthouse project back to the board for further discussion next Wednesday, so Lee will be back before you on the 11th. But we wanted to check in with you about the potential of a fiscal ask today. And if you're not prepared to have the discussion or if you'd prefer to postpone it until next week, that's fine, but wanted to check in on how and if you'd like us to respond to this inquiry from the Deputy State Court Administrator.
I talked to Senator Finley about this yesterday because he'd always promised me that he could help. And he said, Patty, you ask them for every dime you think you need. He said, you ask them? No, remember the last year I wanted to ask for $4 million and we only asked for three and we should have asked for four for Lapine Community Health Center? He said, ask for as much as you can. So anyway, he said, it's, you know, inflation has hit the world and we should ask. So are we saying it's going to be 40 million?
If, yeah, that is, I think, you know, would be determined as a follow up discussion that the board would have next week. So certainly we could indicate that we plan to make a fiscal ask if that's what the board would like to do. But yes, I mean, the third floor shell would be 40 million.
Anyway, that was his recommendation yesterday. He will be, I guess, being sworn in next Monday in Salem. So I just got his itinerary. But, you know, that was his advice.
I guess to rewind to that, to that, that choice and the success of that request, I also just wanted to say that because we, and, you know, three versus $4 million, it probably may not have made much difference, but because we didn't, we weren't overly aggressive with the amount that we asked the state for, it provided a really compelling argument to make to our congressional delegation. And that is how we ended up with $3.08 million from the from our senators through a congressionally directed spending earmark. So we it is important to think about kind of projecting a reasonable image, you know, like a kind of not overstepping with with what we ask for. I do think that, like I've had some discussions with Representative Crop and Representative Levy, and they're they're also each interested in in a kind of working towards a, you know, some kind of contribution for the for the courthouse as well. So, you know, I I think maybe a rule of thumb would be for each, you know, for each legislator we have who is really gung ho about this, we we ask a million from, you know, kind of for each each one of those legislators we can count and we come up with a number that, you know, might be might be reasonable.
So I think of this as it was going to be a 20 something million dollar project, 23, 25, those are the estimates, thinking three stories at the time. We toyed with four stories, which we'll talk about next week, but it ended up inflating into a $40 million project. So I, I mean, I truly, the inflation, so remember, we got to speak with Justice Walters at Sarin Portland, I think you said you did too. You know, the inflation is why we're asking it because we thought we were going to be like, oh, well, we're kind of scheduling this in, but the world changed pretty quick. So my point is 15 million from 25 to 40 is kind of the inflation, very high numbers, but the inflation number there. So I don't mind thinking like that. You know, if we if we ask big, we'd be asking for 20 million, 15 or anything less than that. So I'm just, that's the scope of what I'm thinking.
I think I saw a letter that said we were asking for 25 million in a letter when you said it was going to be 50 million.
I think the original draft, which I just pulled up, which was just a ballpark, was at 25, but that was really just kind of a point of reference for feedback for the board. The ask can be whatever the board wants it to be. So that was really sort of opening the door to the conversation, not.
Yeah, I think 20 to 25 would probably be the most. I'm just repeating what Senator Finley told me, you know?
Yeah, so why not ask a lot?
Yeah, and I definitely get it. You know, if we ask all of our legislators, what do we have, seven represented in Deschutes County? That's only a million each, that's seven million. That's, yeah, so 20, 25.
It's just an ask.
I think we need to wait till next week's meeting, but yeah, but yeah, we will be asking. Let them know.
We'll respond back and let them know that we do plan to make an ask, but we expect to have a firmer.
We'll put pencil to paper next week.
Estimate next week.
I don't think we should ask for more than the the delta in between our original construction estimate and our current.
So that's the scope, kind of, as I say, these are just big wild numbers, but they're, you know, construction estimates at this time.
And I and I think that something smaller, you know, in the in the seven to 10 million range is more will will look better. This is this is not the budget environment that they were looking at two years ago.
Yeah, and we aren't either. So, well, with that, how about we might be able to come to a number here right now? So you're saying like a million dollars per?
Yeah, I.
I had 15 was maybe in the.
Seven to 10 million range.
How about, so 14 is the number that jumps out to me then, because you mentioned seven legislators.
Right, that's all that we have. But this is, we're asking it from the judicial, we're not asking it from our legislators.
But seven people that would be thumbs up possibly, yeah.
Oh, so I would I would take three times seven, ask for 20. And then I know it comes to 21. But, you know.
That made my head hurt because you're always so precise with your numbers when you said that.
I told you why I did it. I, you know, 21, ask for 21, you know?
Okay, well.
What's a lucky number?
Next week then, let's, we were kind of scoping in on something, but next week.
I mean, you can decide.
Yeah.
If you want to ask for a whole lot of money, you can do that. I just think it we run the risk of of looking like we're overstepping and people who ask for unreasonable amounts of money are, don't get, you know, don't don't get what they have.
Well, remember, I mean, the big picture is Deschutes County is we're able to fund this. We have a premier facility and we can keep our public safety throughput at a high level. Counties that don't have these resources, they get their whole facility paid for.
Right.
So we're in that gray area of almost getting punished because we do have resources. So, yeah, I mean, it's just a scenario that we're in.
And we, you know, the reason we got two judges was because we said we would we would cover the costs when when we thought it was a $25 million project.
Okay, well, now it's probably going to be 45, so let's ask for 20.
Next Wednesday.
Yep.
If you knock the fourth floor off, which was seemed like the direction this was going, it's not going to be 45.
Yep, and we'll finalize that on next Wednesday.
Other items next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
So I've got a couple of items. Yeah, I'll get a couple of things going here. So legislative effort, possible legislative effort, City of Lapine, it was mentioned that the sewer and water operator credentials, they don't have the person on staff right now, and I was talking to them, they said that, you know, it's really just a big hump, many years to get these credentials. And, you know, there may be reasons why that that's in place, but I'd like to see if there's support just to ask, you know, our lobbying efforts to do some research on this, to say, okay, is there a way for the state legislature to, you know, kind of reconfigure the credentialing? Because they said that it's years out to get the next person on board and maybe we have to do it like that, but maybe not. And this is the person that has the full certification to be the operator credentials of a water sewer system for a city. But if we have, you know, this could be a case all around the state with the small cities and retirements, people are willing to step up, but the just the the timing and the credentialing requirements just put a long lead time in there. Is there support for kind of doing our homework on that and see if there's a legislative ask in there? Because I'm sure, you know, like Sisters could be in that same spot. If they don't have the person operating, there's nobody behind them, they can't hire the next person.
That's true.
So as I say, at this point, it's kind of an abstract thing. It's not Deschutes County proper, but I'd like to do our homework on it.
There is a, there is an association of small, you know, small municipality, public utility. I can't remember exactly what it's called, but, you know, Keith Bedell, who used to run, you know, he ran the wastewater system for the City of Madras. I mean, he is staff to that organization and I.
I don't know more.
I'm not sure why you couldn't just contract with, you know, the the association to, you know, provide some of the oversight that you need if, you know, if you don't have the the staff in house.
So and that's why I'm asking, just to do a little homework on this. I'm not coming up with answers. It was just a question that was asked of me and, you know, it was in the context of legislative fixes possibly, but I don't know more. I don't just, it was a topic that I said, I'll look into it and that's what I'm bringing.
Okay.
Do you support looking into it?
I do.
A little bit, but I mean, this is, this is, I mean, if this is a legislative ask, then, you know, it seems like it'd be most appropriate for it to go through COCO, the Central Oregon Cities Organization.
And that's fine too. This could be, let's define the problem a little bit better and hand it off. I'm not saying we put a lot of resources here, so.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just saying that this is, you know, as as we were telling all of our friends from Terrebonne and Tumalo, the county doesn't do wastewater systems. So it's kind of, you know, I this is somewhat outside of our scope. So I, and we have a lot of legislative priorities. I mean, I wouldn't want to dilute our focus.
Yeah, we can keep it as a simple ask. I mean, is this a defined problem or not? Because I just know that like the Oregon Water Wonderland Unit Two, Sun River, you know, there's some, there's some systems out there and there are in the rural. And if they can't get their credentialed people, they could be hiring or contracting with consulting firms. Is that cost effective long term or not? These are just questions. I don't, you know, a little bit of little support on that. I mean, we'll take it to a, so I guess, yeah, Nick, could you help just define that question a little bit? Because that's all I'm asking for at this point. Thank you. And then yesterday was Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting. It was a good meeting, well attended. Commissioner Chang was there online. Were you online?
No, I had the ferry interviews.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. But, yeah, so I didn't know, because you could have been. Justice Reinvestment Initiative, so there's like, I think it was what $20,000 or something, but it was a cognitive, moral cognitive training, male and female, kind of breaking it off a little more capacity, which was supported. Valid Measure 110 funding enhancement. So it was Rick Twillevon, and that was a good discussion. It went around for a while. Best care, taking the lead, getting more services. You know, it was stated that Rick said that he would have rather seen more of a plan in place instead of 110, but it was a, you know, voted measure that started the funding mechanism. So this is that time where things are going to start to come together was kind of the big picture that I picked up.
He said he wanted to, he wished there had been a plan in place before the decriminalization of the small amounts, not that it shouldn't have happened, but.
Oh, yeah, but, yeah, I mean, it's a valid measure that happened, which made it happen.
Treatment capacity should have come first and then the decriminalization.
And then Stabilization Center update, which was a real good. Holly was there and Nick started that conversation. It's really a point of pride, a lot of capacity. I think there was kind of pointed out that there's there's good things happening in the backend and a lot of people getting services, reoccurring services, relationships being built. So those were just some real positive items yesterday.
So how many people have they served to date then? Did you give a number?
I don't have that.
She mentioned 8,000.
Right, because they were like at 7,700. So so a lot of those people, they kind of keep circling around, don't they? What was the homeless percentage? Did she give that?
I don't recall that she provided that number.
Okay, she usually gives me all those numbers.
And then one more item. February 16th at the Shark is the joint chamber breakfast for Lapine and Sun River. So that's just a pretty well attended event. I don't know that we were, we usually speak at that. I'm not sure how involved we'll be, but just just so you know the date, February 16th.
I've been in discussion with the two chambers because I wanted to make sure if I go to the NACO Legislative Conference that I'm back in time. So they they will be requesting that we give a presentation.
Yeah, good. So February 16th.
Since we're talking about that timeframe, I'll put out that I am interested in going to the NACO Legislative Conference and that would, that would mean probably that I would miss one Wednesday or the other or both Wednesday board meetings surrounding that. And if other commissioners are interested in going to that conference, then it'd be helpful to to know that so we could start planning.
Yeah, I haven't got that far yet after.
What date is it? What date?
The weekend, you know, of the, it starts first thing in the morning, really early in the morning on Saturday, the 11th and runs the 12th, 13th and 14th. So right up through Tuesday. But if I'm if I'm going all the way to DC, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to make it worth the travel time and get some meetings with agencies and and some of the members of our congressional delegation while I'm there. So that would that'd be adding on to that on one side or the other.
Yep, so five weeks from now or so.
The hotels are already full, the two hotels apparently.
Okay. Oh, yeah, this is an interesting time. I wonder what happened with the votes in Congress today. We'll find that out here. in Congress today, we'll find that out here. Okay, anything else, other items?
My fair, the fair board interviews will hopefully be done by this Friday, so I can bring that back next week.
Speaking of Congress and DC, and the value of going back to, to DC to talk to our congressional delegation, it, just before the winter holiday, the, you know, Congress did pass the FY '23 budget, you know, three months late, for the federal government, and it did include a number of congressionally-directed spending allocations within Deschutes County, and I, I would mention that two of them were things that I specifically advocated for last year during the, that February NACO Legislative Conference, you know, on, on the tail end of that, including $3.08 million for the Lapine Community Health Center expansion, and also $700,000 for an alternate access to the, what's called the 4606 Road on the Deschutes National Forest, but important to know that there are a lot of other really good projects that were funded, Habitat for Humanity, Bend, Deschutes County, or Bend, Redmond, got $800,000 for an affordable housing project, OSU Cascades got $1.4 million for Little Kits Child Care Centers, City of Redmond got $2 million for their constructed waste, constructed wastewater treatment wetlands, and Lompine Irrigation District got $2.5 million towards modernization of their infrastructure, so that they can save a lot of water, and have a little, a little bit more water supply reliability, so, you know, I, I, I mentioned this because it's good to note the results of our advocacy, but also, I, assuming that congressionally-directed spending opportunities continue in the, the new congressional session that's just starting, and all indications are that senators on both sides of the aisle are in support of that, at least, I don't know what's going to happen in the House, it would be good for us to, you know, to the extent that my fellow commissioners see these as opportunities to get important projects in the region funded, it'd be important, it'd be valuable for us to discuss what we would like to ask for, and, you know, I can, I'd be happy to carry some of those requests back to DC in mid-February.
Great, thank you. Any other item?
Nope.
I'll be doing IT Director interviews with staff tomorrow, so I'll be reviewing resumes and talking to some folks looking to be the IT Director. Anything else for this board meeting? Seeing then, meeting adjourned.